The caucus meeting to order for Monday, October 24th. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Present in person.
Councilmember Flueeling.
Here.
Councilmember Dawson. Councilmember McAllen is absent. Councilmember Lawson. Councilmember Howard.
Here.
Councilmember Rodman.
Here.
Councilmember Hertson. Councilmember Glover. Councilmember Somerville.
Present.
Chairman Passment.
Present. We do have a quorum. Who will rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chairman Passment, we need seven. Now a quorum. So if you go into...
No, we need six to have a quorum. More for supermajority for us as council. We have eleven members of council, so we need six to have a quorum.
I'll separate down to seven.
No.
Leave it six.
So we do have a quorum. Public notice of this meeting has been published, posted, and distributed in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. I would ask a member of council to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Mr. Somerville, you were the motioner, and Mr. Rodman, you did the second. Motioned and seconded. Any discussion? The agenda will be approved without objection. Is there anyone who would like to discuss any item on the council meeting agenda? It's fairly straightforward, although there are thirty items on the agenda. We should be able to get through that, well, thirty items plus five consent items, so there's thirty-five items on the agenda. We should be able to get through that relatively quickly, I hope. Seeing no... Yes, sir. Go ahead.
I think of one item that might easier to discuss here rather than there. I think we've already got some time. And that has to do with the building on what we've got before us, which is to invest some of last year's surplus into doing the planning and the permitting for some of the roads to give us a leg up. So if we have that going to third reading in the budget agenda. As we were talking through that, Whitney said one of the possible uses of that money would have been to, would be to use some of the money that we're going to use to whatever it is to buy down the note, existing debt that we have, defecate, I think is the name of it, which I thought was a great catch. And the reason for bringing it up is we still have that before us to use that money, I'm sorry, that money is still going to be set aside for, in case we want to do it in the future. However, when staff initially looked at the possibility of investing some money into the road permitting, they were about the ten million level, now at the about the six million level. And I don't have a strong feeling anyway about that, but it does seem to me that one of our options would be to not set aside that money for the pay down of the bonds and actually go back to the original number that the staff had for doing the pre-engineering and the pre-permitting work. The argument kind of goes like this. The concept behind that is that by spending some money on permitting and preliminary engineering, we do two things. One, we get in the better position ourselves for show ready projects. And secondly, we get ourselves to a point where we've got more work done and it helps facilitate doing the transportation referendum when we get to that point. So it seems to me that it would be a better use of that money rather than to set it aside for the bond repayment, because I don't think at this point in time with interest rates rising, there's really any chance at all that we would save money by doing that. And secondly, but if we're putting it into the roads and permitting, it's money we have to spend anyway. It's a lot of that can be reimbursed as we go forward, so it's kind of like an investment. So it's not something that I would just bring up at third reading if we wanted to change it, unless there's other people that agree with that. But it does seem to me that that would be a better use of that, I think it's roughly three million dollars, two, three million dollars, to put it toward that road piece than it would be to just set it aside in case we want to buy back a bond, which in my mind is unlikely.
Whitney, would you?
Yeah, in this instance, I believe the defecence is actually going to come not from the general fund, but from the debt service fund, so that's a different fund entirely. If you wanted to increase the amount that you would appropriate for additional study for engineering, that would have to come from the general fund.
Okay. I don't care how we do it, it's just, to me, it's just a matter of whether it's a, whether it makes sense to do it. I'm going to be here as you go forward with it, but I just raised it in case it's a better use of money however we move the nickels around.
Okay. Any other comments? Any other, before we go into executive session for the council to discuss? Seeing none, I would ask for a motion for executive session for two items pursuant to South Carolina Code thirty dash four seventy-eight-two and A-one. First, discuss negotiation incident, proposed contractual agreements, and potential sale of property called King Street and Rumingsden Street, and a discussion of employment of a person regulated by county council. Mr. Somerville makes the motion. A second, please.
Second.
Mr. Hertson makes the second. Duly motioned and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, this will be adopted without objection, and I see no objections, and we will be going into executive session at this time.
Fort Fremont closes out a three-hundred-and-fifty-year legacy of coastal fortifications in Port Royal Sound beginning in the mid-sixteenth century. It also represents the closing chapter of America's coastal defense system before the dawn of air power. Fort Fremont is an example of the most advanced military technology of its time. It would parallel the B-17 and aircraft carrier of World War II, the F-35 of today. Fort Fremont was an important part of the Beaufort culture, very similar to Paris Island and the Marine Corps Air Base today.
In fifteen-twenty-five, the Spaniards named this sound and this harbor Santa Elena. They called the navigational point La Punta de Santa Elena, the Point of Santa Elena. And what the Spanish explorers discovered is that Port Royal Sound is a unique piece of geography. It's the deepest natural harbor south of the Chesapeake Bay, possibly south of New York. The channel into Port Royal Sound, this I find a remarkable geological fact. The channel has not changed for five hundred years. There's no inlet on the southern coast that hasn't shifted entirely in five hundred years, except Port Royal Sound. There's something geologically different, or one might say magical, about Port Royal Sound. So Spanish sailors, being the best in the world in their time, found this place very early, knew that for the Spanish explorations of the American southeast, this would be the entrada, the entrance. And so they built a city across the river, across the sound from where we are on Paris Island that became the first capital of Florida. And they explored the back country from this location for more than a century with the object of building a highway from this magnificent harbor to Mexico City. So the sound was known to the Spaniards. It was known to the French, who actually got here first and created the first Protestant colony in the New World on Paris Island over my shoulder. And that colony was a failure. The Spaniards replaced them. It was part of Spanish Florida when the English arrived, a hundred and fifty years later. And this was, became as a consequence, a battleground in the eighteenth century between Spanish interests in Florida in St. Augustine and the English colony in Carolina and in Charleston. And back and forth these wars went, many of them naval wars, many of them employing, as all the sailors knew by then, the magic of Port Royal Sound. When the Civil War came, Confederates defended the harbor, but it was basically indefensible against large naval forces. So the U.S. Navy made it their principal target during the beginning of the Civil War and sent the largest flotilla of ships assembled by the United States Navy in the nineteenth century into Port Royal Sound on November seventh, eighteen sixty-one. In a four-hour cannonade, which would have been deafening from where we're sitting, was heard for miles from Savannah nearly to Charleston. It was called the Day of the Big Gun Shoot. During the Civil War, this harbor that we're looking at was filled with ships. There would be hundreds of ships in this harbor. There was a thousand-foot dock with a railroad on top off of Hilton Head. The military installation was mammoth. There were thirteen thousand U.S. soldiers on Hilton Head, which we're looking at, the largest population on Hilton Head until nineteen seventy-four. So this was a major U.S. government installation in the heart of the South. It was the headquarters of the U.S. Army Department of the South, but more importantly, it was the headquarters of the United States Navy's South Atlantic Blockading Squadron. The biggest ships in the Navy were here. And so it became, and that's really where the story of Fort Fremont starts, with that huge Civil War military operations and installations on Hilton Head, on St. Helena Island, on Paris Island, and in Beaufort.
After the Civil War, we're going to see a massive change in technology that's going to revolutionize the military. During the Civil War, we had ironclad ships, we had rifled cannons, but they were all made out of iron, and they were not terribly effective. But its technology is going to change after the Civil War. We're going to see steel produced, and steel is much harder. So now we have a new material to make armor out of for ships, so we can have these armored ships made with steel that are much more resistant to the shot. Because I have steel, I can make stronger barrels for my guns. I can rifle and machine these much better, and the rifling is the spirals that are cut in the barrel that allows it to shoot further with more accuracy. And we can also now have breech-loading guns that can lock from behind, so I can load my gun from behind. I don't have to go have the old black powder muzzle-loading cannon that I had before. Now I can fire much more rapidly. If I compare the gun of eighteen ninety to the guns of eighteen sixty, for the same caliber, the same diameter gun, an eighteen ninety gun will be able to fire projectile that's four times heavier, can shoot it three times further, can put it in with greater precision, and can put it through much more armor than anything we had in eighteen sixty. It's a world difference. A military historian, E.R. Lewis, would say that the change between the Civil War and eighteen ninety in artillery technology was the greatest that would be seen since invention of artillery in the fourteenth century to the introduction of the nuclear projectile in the nineteen fifties. So there's been a huge change in gun technology. At the same time, it's not just the steel, but also the powder that fires these guns is different. We have new chemical makeup, and sort of like cordite is invented now, and it's still a widely-used military explosive even today. Smokeless powder is invented during this period of time. And it's not just chemical composition, but it's the details of how you make the grain, how fast they burn. So much like the skill of firing a solid rocket, solid fuel rocket, it's that same kind of technology that's been developed in these gunpowder, in this new powder. So our weapons of this day are much, much greater. They would be the great killing machines of World War I. Most of casualties on the battlefields of World War I would come from artillery. So the world has seen a huge change in artillery, and that's tied into changes in ships. We now have steel armored ships. They're all steam-powered. They are now equipped with these fine long-range guns, and they now become the dominant threat of the late nineteenth, early twentieth century. This is the threat. The French and the English would bombard cities like Cairo and reduce them to rubble because they were unable to defend them. So this is how the world was seeing the threat from this new technology. Big battleships are the threat of the era, and new guns and fortifications on the ground are what you have to have to defend against them.
One of the most important and first things that happened after the Civil War is they built a railroad to Port Royal Sound, which didn't exist. It was the first connection of the sea islands to the mainland. The advantage of that railroad is it brought coal to Port Royal Sound. So when the coal was delivered, the Navy followed.
In eighteen seventy-two, Robert Smalls was in the South Carolina Legislature, and he pushed through a resolution to the Secretary of War calling for them to put a navy station on Paris Island. And eventually, he would go on to Congress where he would continue his support for a navy station here in the Beaufort, Port Royal area. They eventually opened a navy station here and a coling station.
They created in the eighteen nineties on Paris Island the largest dry dock in the United States. This is the period when the U.S. Navy was switching from sail to steam. All the navies of the world needed a coling station. This was the principal coling station because of the railroad for the Caribbean and South American U.S. fleets.
This would be the biggest dry dock south of Norfolk. In fact, it is the only dry dock south of Norfolk, Virginia, that's capable of taking these new modern battleships and these new modern armored cruisers. So this becomes at this point a strategic navy base in that it provides coal, and it provides top-line support to the ships, and they can repair the hulls of even the biggest ships in the U.S. Navy. Following the Civil War, national strategy and emphasis in the United States shifted from recovery from war, and all of our coastal fortifications went into neglect. The military was busy taming the West, and coastal defenses became something that was no longer important. And the rest of the world, technology is moving forward, and they're developing these battleships, they're developing new high-quality artillery, and this is going on worldwide. And in eighteen eighty-five, President Grover Cleveland appointed Endicott Board. This was headed by Secretary of War Endicott, William Endicott, and the board would meet and issue a report in eighteen eighty-six, and they said the conditions of our coastal defenses were just unbearable. It cannot be allowed to stay like that. And they made recommendations for fortification and improvements. They identified twenty-nine places that needed fortifications, and eleven of which were critical. In that list of twenty-nine, Savannah and Charleston are on the list, but Beaufort is not on the list. It'll take international events to bring Beaufort into the play of modern fort technology.
So the USS Maine was here on patrol and in the harbor, and while they were in the harbor several times, they entertained the local population. So the merchants and the social leaders and the political leaders of Beaufort were invited to come have lunch with the captain of the ship, Captain Sigsby. And the officers got to know the people, the people got to know the officers. The crew, which was large, would go ashore on payday and make friends with everybody in town. So it was a very social arrangement between the towns, Port Royal and Beaufort, and the ship. So the Maine left here, it went and re-provision, it refueled in Key West, and then went the ninety miles across to Havana into the harbor and blew up.
This inflamed the already hot passions both in Cuba and here in the United States. At that point, somebody in the War Department realized that we had this big dry dock, the only dry dock in the South that could take on and repair these big capital ships that were in our navy. We were going to start operations against a power in the Caribbean, and this fort was totally undefended. And that's what put Fort Fremont on the map. We had to have a fort here to defend the coling station and especially this big dry dock, as well as this fine harbor that's here.
And of course, that event, which killed three hundred or more sailors on the ship, was very much followed by the local news media and very much lamented by the many friends that the crew had made here. The destruction of the USS Maine was a personal matter to Beaufort and to Port Royal Sound. And of course, it was the Spanish-American War and the attempt to defend this harbor again which led to the creation of Fort Fremont. The United States declared war on Spain in April eighteen ninety-eight.
And by early May, we had temporary batteries in place here, submarine mines were in place, and in the summer, they would actually place the mines across the Beaufort River behind me. The temporary batteries were a temporary expedient. They were located to my left about a thousand yards. They immediately began construction of what would become Fort Fremont, the large batteries with house of large guns. Battery Four-Nance, the rapid-fire guns, the smaller battery was completed by June of eighteen ninety-eight.
In eighteen ninety-eight, everybody in town went to war. They had a naval militia unit, South Carolina Naval Militia Unit, and they were absorbed by the Navy. Many of them ran tugboats from here to New York to Key West, which was the principal support base, Tampa and Key West, for the U.S. Army operations in Cuba.
Peace was declared by the end of eighteen ninety-eight, and the remainder of Fort Fremont would not be finished until early eighteen ninety-nine, and the first soldiers would arrive from the regular army at that point in March eighteen ninety-nine.
Well, Fort Fremont was named for Major General John Fremont. He was actually a local boy, so to speak. He was born and grew up in Savannah, Georgia, just south of us, and went to college in the College of Charleston, just north of us in Charleston. He served in the Army and primarily initially as a explorer, as Army forts were generally named for Army officers, and he was connected locally. This is more than likely why the fort was named for him.
The fort was constructed on a site directly across the river from the Paris Island Naval Station, and the site selected was a hundred and seventy acres, which included the two artillery batteries. Fort Fremont, of course, had Battery Four-Nance and Battery Jessup. But then adjacent to the battery site was an administrative quadrangle, a very typical military-type administrative square.
We are sitting in the number-three gun position of a three-gun battery, Battery Jessup, which had three ten-inch disappearing carriage, large-caliber guns, breech-loading guns. Their purpose was to engage the warships that might be entering the harbor and Port Royal Sound. We're here now at the second battery that was part of Fort Fremont. This is Battery Four-Nance, was named for an Army officer that was actually killed during the Spanish-American War during the Battle of San Juan Hill. Battery Four-Nance mounted two British-made four-point-seven-two-inch Armstrong quickfire guns. They were called quickfire because they loaded, were loaded with a complete cartridge, and it, in time of action, they could fire four to six rounds per minute. The purpose of Battery Four-Nance was to defend the minefield, which was the other component of the Endicott Coast artillery or coast defense system. A minefield with controlled mines, controlled meaning that they were connected electrically to shore and could be fired on command from shore. That control station would have been probably shared with the plotting room. And in order to protect the minefield, obviously, an enemy would want to interfere with that, might send vessels, small ships in here at night to try to interfere, and this battery would take those vessels under fire if there was some, there was suspected that they were doing something to interfere with the mines, such as pulling up the cables and cutting those.
The Endicott Era Fort was a formidable technology. It represented state-of-the-art technology, defense technology of its time against the state-of-the-art threat, which would be the battleship.
The life for the soldiers at Fort Fremont was disciplined and regimented. They even had meal times where specified lengths of time, fifteen minutes for lunch, fifteen minutes at breakfast, twenty minutes at supper. They had to practice their skills. They were training and doing maintenance constantly. If you can imagine, with these big guns, they had to have skills in, and practice the skills in artillery, mine-laying, signaling, which involved, in our case at Fort Fremont, the use of the fire control tower, which was a pretty sophisticated and advanced signaling technique. Then they also had to practice the typical military skills, marching and drilling, small arms fire, first aid, and so forth. In addition to that, they also had, participated in athletics. They had physical training, PT, and they also had sports teams. So this was to keep them physically fit so that they could continue their duties because they were, it was pretty rigorous at Fort Fremont.
When eventually the decision was made to move the dry dock and the coling station and the navy station up to Charleston, then this fort no longer became significant. There was nothing left here that was to be protected. And at that point, nineteen eleven, the last troops were transferred out and the fort was closed.
In nineteen oh-one, the mayor of Charleston and the United States Senator Pitchfork Ben Tillman from South Carolina wanted this to move from Beaufort County to Charleston County, because there are more votes in Charleston County. And the mayor wanted the U.S. Corps of Engineers and the Navy to dredge the harbor in Charleston, because battleships in those days required twenty-six feet of water. Charleston's natural harbor is fifteen feet of water. Port Royal is thirty feet of water. In order for Charleston to sustain its port, its commercial port, it had to dredge the harbor. Well, if they could get the Navy up there, they'd get the Corps of Engineers to dredge the harbor. That was the play. And the play for Pitchfork Ben Tillman, the U.S. Senator in nineteen hundred, was that he'd get a whole lot more votes from the largest city in South Carolina. So it was a political, commercial operation, and they moved the Navy, and it was done boom like that.
The fort did its job, a deterrent for anybody that wished to attack these. It provided protection. In fact, the whole Endicott system, although never challenged in this era here in the United States, provided some three hundred major guns, coastal guns, to protect major areas, and left the United States at the beginning of the twentieth century with as well-defended coastline as anyplace in the world.
I would just like to say that it's a magnificent artifact of an era, and it's an era that has been neglected, the turn of the twentieth century, the naval station across the river here. And so it's a, it's a piece of history that's disappearing, and the friends of Fort Fremont and Beaufort County have preserved it for the use of the public and as a memorial to that moment in history.
Fort Fremont closes a three-hundred-and-fifty-year story of homeland security addressing European imperialism in the nineteenth century. It's a tale of how geography, technology, and national security creates a transition for America to become a global power. It's also a wonderful snapshot of America...
It's also a wonderful snapshot of America in the beginning of the 20th century. The Friends of Fort Fremont and Beaufort County have a valued partnership, working in tandem to preserve the fort's integrity and promote the historical, natural, and cultural aspects of the fort. Most important, we are always looking for creative ways to enhance visitor experience.
It's civilization versus nature's fury. Raging blizzards bury cities under thousands of tons of snow. Howly hurricanes tear apart coastal communities with wind and rain, and flash floods wipe entire towns off the face of the earth. As the skies clear, people begin to pick up the pieces. But after the storm, insidious damage is still being done. Our most vital natural resource is under assault, our nation's waters. We're at the Chattahoochee Nature Center, and we're trying to find out what a watershed is. First victim. I need you to tell me what a watershed is. Do you have any idea?
Watershed?
A watershed? Where people go to the bathroom?
Sweating, I guess.
Something to do with sweating?
Uh huh.
Like after you run, when you?
You perspire, yeah.
And then you shed it?
Uh huh.
We wanted to ask you if you knew what a watershed was.
A watershed?
Yeah.
Is it kind of like the rain?
Do you know what a watershed is?
A shed that holds water.
Come here for a second. I want to ask you something. Do you know what a watershed is?
No.
No?
Do you have any idea? What do you think it has something to do with?
Uh, I don't know.
What a watershed is? Yeah. That's just a drain pool, I guess you'd say, or the drain area, that where the water, the rainwater drains into the river.
Correct. That's a great answer.
A watershed is that area of land that drains to a body of water, be that if it's a river, a stream, the ocean, an estuary, a bay. Wherever you live, drains to some water body, and you live in a watershed, so everyone lives in a watershed.
And in this modern industrial age, our water sources are becoming more contaminated with each passing year.
The biggest water quality problem that we have in the nation today is polluted runoff.
All water east of the Continental Divide drains to the Atlantic, while water west of the Divide flows to the Pacific. And one drop of rain can cross many different watersheds along the way. As runoff flows into rivers, streams, and storm drains, the water picks up trash, dirt, bacteria, toxic chemicals, and fertilizers, creating a soup of pollutants that is extremely hazardous to the environment. And the consequences of polluted runoff exist worldwide.
The UN estimate is that there's about a billion people on the planet right now who don't have adequate access to fresh water.
Ninety-seven percent of all water on Earth is salty ocean water. Of the remaining 3% is fresh. Over two-thirds is frozen in glaciers and polar ice. That leaves less than 1% of all the planet's water for our use.
I predict in the future that some of the US water needs are going to come through pipeline because we have just overused our supply.
To address the complex threats facing US water resources, the Environmental Protection Agency recommends adopting a watershed approach.
We're trying to reconnect some of the river.
It's a method that looks at each watershed for its own unique set of environmental challenges and solutions.
In many cases, people mistakenly identify large discharge pipes in the water as the problem, but that may not be the problem. It may be coming from agricultural runoff. It may be coming from stormwater runoff over parking lots and impervious surfaces. Every watershed is different, and you need to look at each watershed in its own terms and then think systematically about how you remediate, how you clean up that watershed.
In California, the Santa Monica Bay watershed drains a dangerous amount of polluted runoff after each storm.
When it rains, literally, the whole residue of urban living ends up getting washed into the storm drain system. It ends up going straight into the bay on Santa Monica Bay's beaches with no treatment whatsoever.
It's actually like a giant toilet flushing because all of the pollution, the dog mess has been building up and building up and building up. When it rains, it just flushes into the storm drain and goes directly into the surf.
In 1996, the Santa Monica Bay Restoration Commission proved there was a link between the contaminated runoff in the Santa Monica Bay and reports of illness afflicting people who swim there.
What we did find was at the outlets of storm drains, no matter where they were up and down the bay, if there was a flow of runoff into the surf zone, those people that were swimming in those areas definitely experienced higher incidences of illnesses.
The pollutants in the water affect surfers because we're actually the indicator species with all the pollutants. When we are in the waters, we're ingesting it through our skin and our mouth. Even if people don't take a swallow of water, it's still getting into our systems, our ears, any orifice in your body. And it causes infections. It can cause colds, sore throats, at the very least.
I wouldn't want to swim in, you know, water that's got those diseases in there, you know, just floating around, making more diseases.
I've seen it pretty much as bad as it can be. I've seen crap floating out in the water, literally.
Generically, we call it fecal coliform. More specifically, you might know of it as E. coli, Salmonella, or Enterococcus, whatever's in poop.
There's times when it tastes funky, for sure.
Every day, the city and county of Los Angeles perform a battery of tests to keep the public informed about water quality in the Santa Monica Bay. Cesar Arzadon begins the monitoring process each morning by taking a series of coastline water samples. Then it's back to the lab for analysis.
Most of the bacteria that you're going to see, it comes from feces. And when you put it under the UV light, you're going to see a different kind of color. It's a fluorescent sign that there is a bacteria, and that one is called E. coli. That one definitely is feces from animals, or it could be humans also.
The results are reported to the Health Department, and beach warnings are posted as necessary.
The number of beach postings has decreased, and 85% of the beaches that have been monitored in California have received either A or B grades, and that's significantly different than four years ago.
But while progress is being made in California, the harmful effects of polluted runoff are a growing concern everywhere. So what can the average person do to help reduce pollution in our watersheds?
How you apply pesticides or not in your garden, how you wash your cars, making sure that you don't throw cigarette butts out onto the street.
Do not dump things on the ground, especially oils or any chemical pollutants. Pick up after your dogs. A lot of people don't realize how important that is. And just be a conscientious citizen, and don't leave anything on the ground.
I think one person can make a difference, and it needs to make the difference. If not you, who?
Coming up.
We're heading for what's known as an ecosystem collapse.
Can the Gulf of Mexico be saved from polluted runoff? It was a flood of apocalyptic scale. 26,000 square miles of the Lower Mississippi Valley inundated by water, more than 200 lives lost, and 600,000 people displaced from their homes. The flood of 1927 was the most disastrous in US history, and its effects are still felt today. After the flood of '27, massive levees were put in place. And while they helped protect the Lower Mississippi River basin from flooding, the levees and other human activities would ultimately harm the watershed in unforeseen ways. The Gulf state of Louisiana is the terminus of the Mississippi River, the mighty watershed that drains 41% of the area of the lower 48 states into the Gulf of Mexico.
We receive water from as far away as Montana, Michigan, to Pennsylvania, Ohio, Iowa. All those waters drain right past this area right here.
But by the time all that water enters the Gulf, it has accumulated enough contaminants from polluted runoff to create an enormous hypoxic zone, an area of water lacking in vital oxygen.
The size of the low-oxygen zone in the Gulf of Mexico is about 9,000 square miles. That's equal to the size of the state of New Jersey.
The shortage of oxygen is killing fish and other sea life and could potentially have a devastating effect on the regional economy.
We are the largest navigation port in the United States. We are the second-largest in the world. We have the largest fisheries in this country.
When we was crabbing, a lot of times, all our crab we did, we can't even sell them.
The reason hypoxia should be of concern to most citizens in this nation is because it's a sign. It's a sign of the degradation of our water resources.
We're heading for what's known as an ecosystem collapse.
If you're going to have an ecological disaster caused by the offshore hypoxic areas, then that absolutely translates into an economic disaster.
So what exactly is causing this dead zone in the Gulf? Hypoxia develops when an area of water receives excess pollutants, primarily an overabundance of nutrients, which produce large algae blooms that die off and lead to low oxygen. And since the Mississippi gets fed by tributaries that flow through 31 states, that adds up to a staggering volume of contaminated runoff.
You have drainage into the Gulf of Mexico from the Ohio River, the Mississippi River, and the Missouri River. Yet each of those three major river systems are watersheds in and of themselves with their own challenges and their own problems.
The Mississippi River has always delivered a lot of water, and that hasn't changed over the centuries. What's changed is the amount of nutrients in that water.
In fact, the Mississippi's nitrogen levels in the Lower Mississippi River have tripled since the 1950s, and the growing hypoxic zone off the Louisiana coast contains the disturbing evidence.
It's like a rusty color, stanky, rotten-looking. You see fish just swimming sideways, gasping for air and stuff like that. And when you pull the nets, not one shrimp alive, all dead, orange. The fish, they rotten, like melting away and stuff like that, can't breathe, stuff. And it's just rotten.
This is just a fact of life, the way we treat our water systems because we use them as our garbage dumps. We use them to dilute our pollutants and things like that, and it flows downstream. I believe the statistic is that if you're in New Orleans, the water that is going by you has passed through a human gut something like three or four times before it gets to you.
Incredibly, Louisiana boasts a natural resource that removes pollutants from the draining Mississippi, the once abundant wetlands.
Plants that grow in wetlands produce these wonderful filters for everything that is coming into them. They trap sediment, they temper chemicals, and what leaves the wetlands is much, much cleaner water.
Wetlands also provide an important habitat for birds and other wildlife. Sadly, the Louisiana wetlands are quickly disappearing.
Coastal Louisiana has lost about 1.2 million acres of wetlands in the last 100 years.
When we levied off the Mississippi, it cut off the Mississippi River water from the marshes.
In addition to the levees, a network of man-made navigation channels is also compromising the wetlands by allowing salt water to seep into the marshes.
Once that salt water travels up these channels and overflows the banks of these channels out into freshwater systems, such as the Cypress Swamp, that salt water sits out there around the roots of these trees and kills them. They cannot survive salt water. They're freshwater plants.
Eliminating the hypoxic zone will take more than saving our wetlands. Reducing nutrient runoff in the Mississippi River watershed is the heart of the problem. It's an issue involving over half the states in the nation and a vast array of industries, particularly farming, which uses nitrogen-rich fertilizer to grow its crops.
Fertilizers are helping the United States produce the food for the world, but there is such a thing as overuse.
There are scientists who have done the analyses and predict that you could reduce fertilizers by about 12% without reducing crop production and see a significant decrease in the amount of nitrogen going into the Mississippi River.
Experts say the first key to changing behavior is raising public awareness.
We all live downstream of somebody, and we all live upstream of somebody. So what somebody else does in their watershed affects the water that I receive, and what I do in my watershed affects the water that somebody else receives downstream.
If we don't clean up our act, our water resources, which we simply cannot live without, will be ruined. Coming up, can the water supply for 9 million New Yorkers be saved from the ravages of polluted runoff? In January of 1996, one of the most devastating winter storms in history slammed the East Coast. Two feet of snow dumps on New York and throughout the Northeast Corridor. Schools, airports, and roads are shut down. By the time it's over, the blizzard and resultant flooding caused $3 billion in losses, and 187 lives are taken. And in the Catskill Mountains of upstate New York, the snowmelt triggers another potentially devastating crisis. Stormwater runoff, contaminated with trash, dirt, fertilizers, and pesticides from nearby farms and communities, threatens the freshwater supply. And the Catskill system of reservoirs is vitally important, for it is the biggest watershed of New York City, providing drinking water to over 9 million people.
The miracle of the city's water supply system is largely unknown to most New Yorkers. You ask people, where does the water come from? Often, people shrug their shoulders and say, New Jersey.
I figured that we were probably our own separate water system than from upstate. I'd rather be drinking water from upstate than the Hudson River.
I don't know that most people are aware of how large the problem is and how close to crisis many of our water supply systems are.
To preserve the purity of the reservoirs and enforce the Safe Drinking Water Act, the Environmental Protection Agency presented the Big Apple with two options. Either build and maintain a $6 billion facility to filter all of the city's tap water, or fund a $1 billion program to protect the watershed from polluted runoff.
When it comes to our investment in clean air and clean water, preserving open space, fixing antiquated sewage treatment plants, we can't wait. It doesn't get any less expensive. It gets more expensive.
With the historic watershed agreement of 1997, an unprecedented upstate-downstate partnership was forged to protect the New York City water supply.
The watershed agreement is saving New York City billions of dollars.
The plan includes purchasing and preserving 355,000 acres of undeveloped watershed land, the upgrading of sewage treatment plants, and the protection and restoration of stream corridors.
What we're looking at here is Main Tributary, the Asopus Creek. During flooding, we were seeing a lot of sediment coming out of the stream. The clay gets into the water column, and it becomes very turbid, and then it makes it very difficult to treat and clean that water. So from a water quality perspective, we're very concerned about erosion.
The program also provides funding for farmers that implement agriculture management practices.
Well, we have a very exciting program with the Watershed Agricultural Council where we are working with local farmers. We look at how they're handling the animals so that the runoff associated with manure, fertilizer, and that farm activity isn't getting into the streams around our reservoirs.
This water here is basically the water you're going to be drinking down in the city, and I feel I've got a responsibility to try my best to keep it clean for when it gets down there. It used to be when it rained here on the farm, the water that ran away from the back of the barn here was full of mud, manure, and it would just run brown and right into the stream. Two years ago, we would spread every day. We'd have to take it out, spread it on the fields. If the snow was deep, we spread it on the snow, and unfortunately, if the ground was froze when the snow melted, the nutrient value of it for fertilizer was gone and wound up down in the reservoir.
With New York City funding, a secure, above-ground steel tank that can hold 400,000 gallons of manure was installed on the Meadowbrook Farm.
That's enough storage for six months of the year. Now we can store it, spread it when it'll do the most good to us for fertilizer, and we don't have to spread it every day. I worked with Tim on the plan to develop the improvements we're going to make. Plan really belongs to the farmer, and it's a collaboration of their ideas and what technical advice we can bring to the program, but the farmer makes the decision.
It's a program that seems to make everybody happy.
Here's to the farmers who are working so hard to make sure we've got clean water to put in our coffee.
To guarantee the city's water supply is fresh at the tap, comprehensive tests are performed by the New York City Department of Environmental Protection, both in the lab and at over 1,000 sampling stations throughout the city.
New York City has probably one of the most extensive water quality monitoring programs in the nation, if not the world.
We're sampling every day, 365.
We're sampling every day, 365 days a year. I've been drinking this water for 53 years, nothing else. Best water in the world. New York City, straight from the tap to my lips.
Coming up, the future of our water supply remains at risk. But there's something everyone can do to help protect it. Find out how, next. To keep our watersheds free of pollutants will require the actions of every citizen, community, and business.
Paved concrete surfaces, asphalt, parking lots, sidewalks. The question is, do we need to have as many as we do? Because to the extent that you have too much impervious surface, the water is not retained on site. It doesn't soak into the ground. It runs off, picks up speed, carries pollutants and contaminants into the water body.
One strategy for preventing stormwater runoff is occurring at the new Ford Rouge Center in Dearborn, Michigan. This remodeled truck plant is covered by a green roof the size of eight football fields. Planted with a porous ground cover, it reduces the amount of polluted runoff released into the watershed.
The thing that tends to get the most attention is the 10-acre green roof. But that's really just part of a philosophy that if an area does not have to be paved or built upon, it's going to be green space.
And communities are also implementing green space strategies, such as rain gardens.
They sloped the lot in such a manner that all the flow goes towards this landscaping where basically the polluted runoff can percolate into the ground and get filtered than going straight onto the street into the storm drain system. And really a very simple approach to cleaning up our runoff in urban areas.
But perhaps the most powerful course of action is individual participation.
People need to take responsibility for the state of our waters, and water conservation is one area where they can do that as a committed citizen. All those things your mom told you, take a short shower, don't let the water tap run while you're brushing your teeth.
Taking your household hazardous waste to a cleanup and recycling day. Don't wash your car on the streets and put all those suds down into the drain.
When you change your used motor L, you don't dump it into the street. Everybody's got to clean up after their pets. Obviously, that's a big concern. Fertilizers, herbicides, pesticides. Make sure you don't use them anytime there's any chance of rain coming up in the near future. When you're irrigating your lawn and your garden, make sure that you're not overspraying and causing all those chemicals to end up getting into the storm drain system. The only way we're going to solve the problem is if everybody does their part.
We all live in a watershed. We all have an impact on our environment. And we must all play a role in the protection and restoration of our valuable water resources. To learn more about how you can get involved and to get a free brochure called "After the Storm," visit epa.gov/weatherchannel.
This is the county council meeting of Monday, October 24th. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Cunningham.
Present in person.
Councilmember Fleelling.
Present.
Councilmember Dawson.
Present.
Councilmember McGellin.
One, one, one.
Councilmember Lawson.
Mark Lawson here.
Councilmember Howard.
Here.
Councilmember Rodman.
Here.
Councilmember Hervishan.
Present.
Councilmember Glover.
Here.
Vice Chair Somerville.
Present.
Chairman Passamit.
Here.
U. Vaquon.
Yes ma'am.
Would you all rise for the pledge of allegiance and then please remain standing for the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
When the invocation is done by our council members, it's a reflection of what we're going to do. I studied our agenda tonight, so I'm combining two different invocations together. One is called "All Voices Heard" and the other is called "Wise Use of Time." Almighty God, may your grace cover each aspect of this meeting. We pray that all voices will be heard and that we will have a mindset of inclusivity. May this be a safe place for people to express their opinions and a place where ideas matter more than titles. May everyone be engaged and involved and may all concerns be addressed. Enable us to wisely and efficiently manage our time in this meeting today. Help us stick to the agenda and not get distracted with discussions that are pertinent to our objectives. Help us to clearly understand the objectives and expectations of this meeting and stay focused on those things. Amen. So we welcome everybody who's in the audience, online, watching us either on the county channel or Facebook or YouTube or however you get us. Public notice of this meeting has been published, posted and distributed in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. I would ask a member of council to approve tonight's agenda. Don't move, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Rodman makes the motion, a second please.
I'll make a second.
Ms. Howard makes the second. Dooley motion in second and any discussion? See none, the agenda will be approved without objection and I see no objections. Next is the approval of minutes of October 3rd, 2022. A motion please.
Somerville.
Mr. Somerville makes the motion, a second please.
Second.
Mr. Cunningham makes the second. Dooley motion in second and any discussion? See none, the minutes will be approved without objection and I see no objections. We now turn to our administrator, Mr. Greenway. Love your socks, by the way.
Special event earlier this evening. Thought I'd wear my superhero socks tonight. Anyway, good afternoon, chairman, councilmembers, citizens who are here with us and those that are watching us online. Typically during this time I introduce employees, county employees, but tonight I've chosen to forego that opportunity in exchange for another opportunity and make you all aware of a program that has recently been implemented here by none other than one of our rock star ACAs, Mr. Jared Fralix. This was his idea. He put together a group of folks to spearhead putting together what is known as the Beaufort County Emerging Leaders Program. So I'm gonna call on Katie Herrera, who is one of the leaders of that group and she's gonna come up and give a brief presentation about that program, about what it's designed to do and the participation by the staff. I think there are a lot of county staff members here behind me, all of whom are members of the Emerging Leaders Program. So hopefully she will recognize those as well. So come on up, Katie, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. Thank you, Eric, for allowing me to be here today. I know usually I'm here talking about stormwater, but I do want to present to you all the Emerging Leaders Program. Like any good story with Beaufort County involved, this one starts with Jared Fralix. Back in 2021, he came to some of us with an idea of getting staff members involved to create better relationships amongst us all, whether they be personal or professional. And so initially we started this group very small. We had about nine members from our public works department and engineering team that got together to start talking about ways we can develop ourselves as professionals and ultimately make better stewards for Beaufort County. So the vision of this group is to provide an organization of emerging leaders within the county to better all of our departments as well as ourselves and to continue to make this place a wonderful place to live, work and play. The mission of our organization is to attract, develop and retain emerging leaders within the Beaufort County organization through engagement opportunities, again intended to foster those personal and professional developments. Next slide. So I'll introduce myself again. My name is Katie, I'm the Stormwater Manager and I serve as the president of this organization. With nine people, it's really kind of easy to corral us all, but we began to grow and we began to go grow rather quickly after getting the go-ahead from Mr. Greenway. At that stage, we brought on a vice president, Ms. Victoria Hoffman. She's the public works project coordinator. And then again, as we continued to evolve this organization amongst county staff and the different departments, we realized that there was so much more that we could do, having a stronger leadership group. So as you can see, we've got Angel Marzenkosky from Solid Waste and Recycling. She's our membership director. We have Ms. Pamela Cobb, the planning director. She's our disaster recovery coordinator. We have Sierra Hall, the community outreach director of the organization. She's a senior admin over in engineering. And then we have Ms. Brittany Fields, the transportation program manager. Again, next slide. Represented amongst us, we started, like I said, very small between public works and engineering and now we have well over 13 departments represented amongst the county organization. There are currently 36 active members and it's been such an exciting program to get to spearhead but also be a part of with everyone that we work closely with. Next slide. So one of the things that we really like to do is give back to the community. In coordination with some of our capital improvement projects opening up, of the Whitehall Boat Landing area as well as in front of Brer Memorial Park. Next slide. And this past weekend, we were able to participate in the trick-or-treat event with the city of Beaufort, having a candy, our little candy castle, having kids come through. And again, just a really great way to engage our membership within the community. We had a lot of excited kids and parents and leadership, even within the city organization, that were excited to have us there. We do participate in a lot of socials, and a couple of us even went to the White House to talk about emerging leaders to Joe Biden. He wasn't there. He was in Delaware, but you know, we tried. And next slide. So again, we're a growing organization. We really enjoy being together professionally and personally outside of this. We do continue to recruit staff members within the Beaufort County organization. We're very proud of the members that we have and look forward to continuing to grow our numbers. That way, we can do more within the community. Again, we like to support ourselves and as individuals and just the county as a whole. So we want to continue to keep Beaufort the great place to live, work, and play, and we appreciate all the support from senior leadership, Mr. Greenway, Whitney Richland, Jared Fralix, of course, and all other, you know, senior staff at the county. So thank you.
Wow, very good.
Well, that was a nice brief report. Excellent. Next is a presentation of a proclamation to the Young Marines and Observants of Red Ribbon Week, and I'm going to ask Vice Chair Somerville to read that proclamation. And then after that is done, they have requested a picture to be taken with the entire council, so we will assemble out front for a picture.
Whereas, we all start off whereas, you never notice that. Whereas communities across America have been plagued by the numerous problems associated with illicit drug use and those that traffic in them. And whereas there is hope in winning the war on drugs, and that hope lies in education and drug demand reduction, coupled with the hard work and determination of organizations such as the Young Marines and the Marine Corps League. Whereas, one of the pillars of the Young Marine program is to lead positive drug-free lifestyles and to educate and encourage others to do the same. Whereas, young marine units are mandated to teach a standardized curriculum that focuses on gateway drugs that also stays current with drugs that affect our youth. And whereas, young Marines participate year-round in community projects and events that focus on reducing and eliminating drug abuse by our youth. And whereas, governments and community leaders know that citizen support is one of the most effective tools in the effort to reduce the use of illicit drugs in our communities. And whereas, the red ribbon has been chosen as a symbol commemorating the work of Enrique Kiki Camarena, a Drug Enforcement Administration agent who was murdered in the line of duty and represents the belief that one person can make a difference. And whereas, the Red Ribbon Campaign was established by Congress in 1988 to encourage a drug-free lifestyle and involvement in drug prevention and reduction efforts. And whereas, October 23 through 31 has been designated National Red Ribbon Week, which encourages Americans to wear a red ribbon to show their support for a drug-free environment. Now therefore be it resolved that Beaufort County Council recognizes the Young Marines during Red Ribbon Week for their efforts in educating the youth all year long through various events and community projects. Would you all like to comment on what you all think? We'd like to hear from you. Please.
Good evening, council. The Young Marine Program is not only a program to focus on drug enforcement and getting rid of drugs, but it focuses mainly on the youth, such as myself. Will come up and will, they give us uniforms, and it gives us a sense of pride and helps us to stay away from the drugs that can be implemented into our lives in multiple ways, not only through school but in the community as well.
Good evening, council. We just wanted to take an opportunity to say thank you for partnering with us. This is a fight that isn't handled just in our backyard but across our county. And even though we are representing upstate Young Marines, which is kind of in the upstate of South Carolina, we reside in Hampton County. And so this is across county, across the state, across the nation, and across the world. And so we just want to thank you for partnering with us year after year. We appreciate it. We provided a few red ribbons. I'll hand over to the clerk of council if any of you would like to wear them this week.
Now we invite council to come down and let's have a photo walk.
Asha King. Everybody right here on the count of three. One, two, and three. And one more. Thank you.
Okay, we are now at the citizen comments, and two people have signed up to provide comments to the council. Danny, will you come forward, please, to address?
Yeah, that's fine.
That's fine.
Mr. Chairman, I want to thank you for the opportunity to come before council and speak. I'm Danny Lussain, president of Beaufort County Farm Bureau Federation and Chairman Michael with Farm Bureau Government Relations. I have here a letter that was sent to all council members. I believe it was made out last Friday. Concerning the ordinance that was passed on livestock evacuation, an evacuation order is called for in Beaufort County. I'm not going to read the letter, but I hope that each one of y'all have taken time to read it and study over it. The Farm Bureau feels like it is unneeded and unlawful, as stated in the letter, and we hope the council will reconsider and strike the ordinance from the books. Thank you, and I will turn over.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Chairman Michael. I work with the South County Farm Bureau Federation in Columbia, South Carolina. I appreciate the opportunity to come and speak with you guys. What I mainly wanted to say was just to agree and support Mr. Lussain's letter and the fact that we feel that this is an issue that hopefully we can get served, get solved. We had a great opportunity with a livestock control officer came to our county Farm Bureau meeting here in Beaufort, and we had good discussion. This is after the ordinance had passed already, but we had good discussion and began. And then Ms. Howard came to the annual meeting, and we really didn't discuss, but she heard. She heard a lot of the concerns of the Farm Bureau area, so we just appreciate the fact of them being present and being a part of our group, and we hope that we'll take every advantage to take advantage of opportunities to serve on task force and committees that were related to our agriculture, the livelihood, and also for the betterment of the community. But just thank you for your time.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address council? Seeing none, we will end the citizen comments section. We will go to the liaison and committee reports. Ms. Howard, you said you had a brief report.
I do. Two things. Last week, we had an outstanding Stormwater Board meeting. It was a field trip. I wish Katie hadn't left yet. I was gonna thank her personally. It went very well, and it was at the Stormwater Retention Area in Okati. Very educational for all the board members. And then also, I went to Fort Royal's consultant's presentation on their final report for the proposed development of Rebaugh Road on, as far as commercial properties and other things between Paris Island Gateway and Burger King, Pigly Wiggly area. So it was very interesting. Thank you.
Okay, any others?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just that, I don't know if you guys saw the email today, but in Parks and Rec, the tennis courts are gonna be opening on the 25th at 10:00 a.m. They're doing the ribbon cutting for that in Beaufort.
Thank you. Any others? Seeing none, we will now move to the public hearings and action items. There are matters arising out of the executive session as a result of going into executive session in caucus. That will be taken up under item number 12. So we're at item number 11, which is the approval of the consent agenda. May I have a motion for the approval of the consent agenda?
Somerville. I'll second.
Mr. Dawson makes the motion. Mr. Lawson makes the second. Duly motioned and seconded. Are there any questions, concerns? Seeing none, this will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Item number 12, I would ask Mr. Glover. We're going to hold a public hearing and third reading of an ordinance authorizing the county administrator to execute any and all documents necessary for the sale of county-owned real properties identified as 1407 King Street and 600 Wilmington Street, City of Beaufort. I would ask Mr. Glover to make a motion to approve that, and then Ms. Howard to second that, and that Mr. Glover will make an amendment to that. Okay?
Mr. Chairman, I would do exactly what you just said. So the motion is to approve item number 12 as written. I think he's ready already, so.
Yep.
That's the motion.
And Ms. Howard, you will?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. And Mr. Glover, you wish to amend the motion?
I would love to amend the motion to read as follow. To correct the housing construction on 600 Wilmington Street that is dedicated to work folks and affordable housing and to remove the contingency for construction and leasing of Wilmington Street property to be completed before vertical construction is commenced on the King Street property and to include a contingency that until all the units on Wilmington Street property are issued, a certificate of occupancy only, I'm sorry, include a contingency that will, until all the units on Wilmington Street property are issued, a certificate of occupancy, only seven units on the King Street property can be issued a certificate of occupancy. And if I can get a second, I'll clarify anything or any question anybody may have.
I'd like to second that.
Ms. Howard makes the second. Okay, Mr. Glover, any other comments?
Basically, what we want to do is to, before, in the previous ordinance, we stated that no work on the, make sure I got it right, on the King Street will take place until the affordable housing on Wilmington Street is completed. We are now reversing that to allow the construction of seven units on the Wilmington Street to go forward, and a certificate of occupancy will be issued. After that, the remaining property on King Street will not receive certificate of occupancy until all the affordable housing units on Wilmington Street is completed. That's essential what that motion does.
Great. Okay, thank you. Okay.
I want to make sure I got that right.
We will take a vote on the amendment first, and then we will have the public hearing, and then the vote on the amended motion. So is there any other discussion before we vote on the amendment? Okay, it's been duly motioned and seconded to amend. Is there any objection to the amendment? I see no objections, so the amendment is approved, and now we will turn to the public. Is there anybody in the public who wishes to make comment about this particular item as amended? Seeing none, we will close the public section. Are there any comments before we vote on the amended motion? Seeing none, it's been duly motioned, seconded. The amendment has been approved, so now it reads the ordinance as amended. Is there any objection to this motion passing? I see no objections. Mr. Flewelling?
Yeah, you know, I'd like a ruling from the chair.
Yes.
I believe that this may, at some future point, be construed as a substantial change to the motion and therefore would require a reversion back to second reading. But I'd like a ruling from the chair that this is, to determine whether or not you determine this is a substantive change.
I don't think it is, Brian. I don't think it's the intent of a substantial change. I think it's just removing the contingency because the city of Beaufort has recommended to the developer that the two properties not be treated as two different properties but one single property, and that's why we're making this amendment to that, so that he can fulfill that obligation. So I don't think it's substantial one. Is there anyone?
I'm not making a motion, sir. I'm just asking a question, and I want you to.
No, I thought that was a good clarification on your part as to why we are doing this. Okay. Seeing none, then this will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Item number 13 is a public hearing and third reading of an ordinance to amend the Beaufort County Ordinance 2022/33. That's not, the year is 2022 to 33. It's just ordinance number 33 in the year 2022. For the fiscal year 2022-23 Beaufort County budget to provide for additional appropriations to pay for the 2022 carryovers, use of fund for property acquisition and transportation projects, and the use of current year funds for capital projects and equipment purchases, to feast refund, general obligation bonds, and other matters thereto. A motion, please.
Somerville, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Rodman makes the motion. A second, please. Mr. Somerville makes the second. Duly motioned and seconded. Is there anybody in the public who wishes to speak on this particular issue? Seeing none, we will close the public portion. Is there any member of council who wishes to make comments about this? Seeing none, this will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Item number 14 is a public hearing and third reading of an ordinance to establish a regional housing trust fund and other matters related thereto. A motion, please.
Somerville. Chairman. I'll second.
Mr. Cunningham makes the motion. Mr. Dawson makes the second. Duly motioned and seconded. Is there any member of the public who wishes to comment about item number 14? Seeing none, we'll close the public portion. Is there any member of council who wishes to speak on this matter? Seeing none, this will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Item 15 is a public hearing and third reading of an ordinance to amend the Beaufort County Ordinance 2022/33 for the fiscal year 2223 Beaufort County budget to provide for the distribution from Bernal Park Phase 2 Fund and other matters related thereto. A motion, please.
Somerville, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Glover makes the motion. A second, please.
Second.
Mr. Somerville makes the second. Duly motioned and seconded. Any remaining members of the public who are here now wish to make a comment? Seeing none, we will close the public comments section. Any member of council wish to make a statement about this? Seeing none, therefore this will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Item 16 is a public hearing and third reading of an ordinance. is a public hearing and third reading of an ordinance for a text amendment to the Beaufort County Code of Ordinances, Chapter 2, Article 8, Division 2, Section 2-619, to require a property identification number on quitclaim deeds. A motion, please.
So moved.
Mr. Glover makes the motion. A second, please.
I'll second.
Ms. Howard makes the second, duly motioned and seconded. Any member of council wish to make a comment about this? Mr. Flouelling? You're on mute, don't forget. You're on mute.
No comments, sir. I just object.
Yes, I duly noted. Are there any other comments? This will be approved with one objection. Are there any other objections? Seeing none, Mr. Flouelling will be the objector, so this passes with nine yes, one no, one absent. Item 17 is a public hearing and third reading of an ordinance authorizing the county administrator to enter into an exchange purchase and/or sale agreement with the town of Hilton Head Island for the sale and purchase of real property consisting of 68 Helmsum Way, 43 Jenkins Road, 70 Bagall Road, and 152 William Hilton Parkway. A motion, please.
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Howard makes the motion. A second, please. Mr. Rodman makes the second, duly motioned and seconded. Any member of the public wishes to comment regarding this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public session. Any comments from the council members? Seeing none, this will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Item number 18 is a public hearing and second reading of an ordinance for a text amendment to the Beaufort County Procurement Code, Division 4, Section 2-509, authority and duties of a purchasing director and the chief financial officer.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Somerville makes the motion. Mr. Cunningham makes the second. Any member of the public wish to comment about this? Seeing none, the public portion is closed. Any member of council wish to make a statement? Seeing none, this will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Item 19 is a public hearing and approval of a resolution authorizing the county administrator to enter into a purchase and sale agreement with the city of Beaufort for the purchase of real property with an address of 1505 North Street. Motion, please.
So moved.
Mr. Somerville makes the motion. Second.
I'll second.
Ms. Howard makes the second, duly motioned and seconded. Any comments from the public regarding this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public portion. Comments from, Mr. Rodman, just when I may have missed this along the way, but why is this a resolution and not an ordinance if we're appropriating money?
It's already, I'm being told it's already been approved by an ordinance.
Okay.
The funding has already been approved by ordinance, so we're just, we're just making the final action.
I had a question regarding the, on that property, the tree that will need protection. Have we negotiated anything with the city on that, as far as the cost of the property?
That's not on this property.
It's on this property, isn't it?
It's not.
It's not?
No, this is on, that tree that you're speaking of, you're talking about the witness oak?
Right.
Yeah, that's on the adjacent properties we've already purchased, called the Douting Lot, right across the street from the Pat Conner Liberation Center, and we're working on an agreement with that group, an lease agreement, and defining the boundaries of the area to be leased for establishing a pocket park around that tree with that particular group. You all will see that here in, hopefully, November or December.
I apologize. I was getting the two pieces of property.
We've already purchased the Douting Lot.
All right, thank you.
Yes, go ahead. Mr. Glover?
When you do that, working out with the, with the Pat Conner, it even involve the arborists with that as well?
Yeah, the arborists has already been engaged, and they already did the work on the tree last Thursday. So I'm working with them already to, if you ride through there now and look at that tree, it looks vastly different since last Thursday. It's, they've entered into a, into a in-kind agreement with Bartlett Tree Service, and they did the work on it last week.
Okay. Any further comments? Duly motioned and seconded, this will be approved without objection.
I object, Mr. Chairman.
And there are objections. Mr. Flouelling, you are an objector. Mr. Hervishan is an objector, and Mr. Cunningham is an objector. So we have three objections. Any others? Seeing none, we will have six yes, three objections, one absent. The motion will pass.
That only adds up to 10.
Yeah, because there's only 10 of us here.
He's gone. You said six, three.
I'm sorry, seven, three.
Just checking.
You're absolutely right, and it should be seven, three.
You had me, now you had me thinking I was crazy.
Yeah. Okay. Item number 20 is a first reading of an ordinance to amend the zoning map of Beaufort County to change 175 Fording Island Road from T2 Rural to C5 Regional Center Mixed Use.
I make the motion to do this.
Ms. Howard makes the motion. A second, please.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Rodman makes the second, duly motioned and seconded. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to just clarify and let council know that we will be bringing the second parcel that relates to this forward probably during November. It'll go to the planning commission in November, Rob?
December.
December, okay. So we'll be bringing that forward in December.
Okay, very good. Duly motioned, second. This will be approved without objection. Are there any objections? I see none. 21, first reading of an ordinance for a text amendment to the Community Development Code, Section 5 dot 11 dot 60, River Buffer, to clarify penalties for removing trees from the river buffer without appropriate permits. Motion, please.
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Howard makes the motion.
Second.
Mr. Somerville makes the second, duly motioned and seconded. Any comments by council members? Seeing none, this will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. 22 is a first reading of an ordinance amending the Beaufort County Code of Ordinances, Chapter 74, Building and Building Regulations, Section 74 dash 64, Adoption of Building Codes, amends the Code of Ordinances to adopt the 2021 state mandated, state mandated code additions. A motion, please.
I make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Howard makes the motion. A second, please.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Rodman makes the second, duly motioned and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, this will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. 23 is first reading by title only of an ordinance for the text amendment to the Community Development Code, known as the CDC, Section 5 dot 3 dot 20, Architectural Standards and Guidelines Applicability in Appendix Division A dot 1 dash 20, Community Preservation Districts, Relationships to the Community Development Code, to restrict that a shipping container or other similar portable storage container is not considered a dwelling. A motion, please.
So moved.
Mr. Glover, a second, please.
I'll make the second.
Ms. Howard, is there any discussion?
Just if someone could give the public a brief explanation why this one is just by title only at this point? Is there a rush?
How did you guess?
So we have a situation in Beaufort County where individuals are trying to establish cargo containers in areas where we do not allow cargo containers, so they have claimed now that they're going to do architectural drawings to convert those cargo containers into dwellings. It would be my advice to you all not just allow that practice to start in this county, because it is going to be very difficult for folks to do that, for one. It's going to be expensive and costly, two, and it will...
Is somebody's computer off?
Somebody just sat feet. They just unmuted their computer. So we're doing it by title only. We're advertising for the public hearing tomorrow, and we will invoke pending ordinance doctoring tomorrow, and we will enforce this ordinance until the outcome and council decides final action on as not allowing those to get permits.
Thank you.
Mr. Hervishan?
Thank you.
You're going to have to sell your residence, isn't it?
Yeah, I know, right?
Yeah, thanks, Paul.
Totally lost my train of mind. How pervasive is this, and can you provide some more context on the comment about it would be expensive?
Well, so you have to get structural drawings from design professionals in order to do this work. Essentially, the cargo containers are then, you know, massively overhauled to be converted into the dwellings, and it may take, you know, multiple cargo containers in order to make these dwellings of any size where they can reasonably accommodate people. It can be done, and it is done in places. I'm just not sure it's something we want to allow in Beaufort County. And I'd go one step forward further to say that many covenants and restrictions don't address the conversion of cargo containers, because this is something that's relatively new. It's not a modular home, it's not a mobile home, so you may be putting yourself in the middle of a lot of neighborhood disputes if we do not do this.
So this would be expensive to, I guess, what you would call a developer, right? Not necessarily the county, per se.
It would be expensive to the county, it'd be expensive, and I'll let Chuck come up and elaborate on all the building code issues. Thank you, Chuck, for doing that.
Well, real quick, what about the first part of that, about how pervasive this is?
How pervasive it is?
Yeah.
It's not very pervasive right now, because we would not tell someone they could do it. We had a situation where someone did it, put cargo containers out on a piece of property on St. Eleanor. We got a complaint from the adjacent property owners, and then when we approached the individuals about the cargo container being there, they said, well, we'll just convert them and get design drawings, so we can convert them into a dwelling. So we have one situation at this point, but if you start, if we issue a permit for that one, then I can almost guarantee you that it's going to continue to escalate throughout the county.
Thanks, Eric.
So a couple of things to add. Good afternoon to everyone. So we live in a coastal region, right? Building codes and standards exist for the benefit of the long-term ownership of homes and residents and dwellings. Imagine a steel container within a salt environment that, for all practical purposes, would have to be engineered like a little NASA capsule to manage the moisture. Then to insulate it properly, you would have to have some kind of a system to separate that moisture from the inside of the container. All of this would have to be engineered. So then you have your plumbing, mechanical, electrical systems inside of a metal box, so you have issues there. Then we have access issues, all the fenestration, stores, windows, and the like, that have manufacturer install instructions that are UL listed for use in wood frame or metal frame structures, or even masonry structures. But none of those address shipping containers or metal steel structures. So if we were to allow this, it would be problematic on many fronts. But imagine being the owner who buys that in 10, 15, 20 years, you would literally have to disassemble that to see what the health of that metal container is, and once rust were to set in in a coastal environment, K D bar the door. So, I hope that helped.
It did, but I just have one more question. Wouldn't that be on the purchaser of that unit to do an inspection at that point, as opposed to, I'm just trying to figure out why the county needs to get in the middle of that?
Sure, so you could say that for any code, right? Any code standard. The reason they exist, the reason we allow certain grade materials, the reason we allow certain structural elements in a building, we could say that for pretty much any structure or any method of construction, right? It's all their fault, or it's all their responsibility, or they, you know, they should have the liability to see whether the electrical system is viable inside of a wall or whatnot. So the standard is there as a minimum standard for the protection and insurability, the long-term insurability and viability of the structure itself. So could you look at it that way? Yes, but I really wouldn't want to put that on us on the end user in 10 years to buy a property, much like termites, things of that nature. We require pre-treats. The code requires pre-treats, they require certain treatments, so that that protection is there. So, anyway.
Would this be a different issue if it wasn't made of steel?
So if it wasn't made of steel, there are prescriptive code that allows for wood frame, other UL listed materials. It's just, this particular one, a steel box is very problematic on many different fronts. So I endorse the ordinance, and I ask for you to pass it, please.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm done.
Mr. Glover?
Yeah, don't go over, because the, how would, how would this impact agriculture at this time?
None, zero. And the reason why...
So if somebody wanted to put a metal building, these containers on their property for the purpose of agricultural use and needing electricity there, would that prohibit them from getting electricity? Because you may think it's a dwelling, and they're using it for agricultural use.
Sure. So anytime we issue a permit, we take the use, occupancy type, and construction materials into consideration. If they apply for a permit for a building, the building code specifically states how they should do that as a commercial build. Converting a shipping container into a building, I would say it would probably be the same issue, but this ordinance says specifically dwelling, so it would only be for the residential use.
They would need electricity. So how do you determine whether, when you issue that permit to allow electricity in that dwelling, I mean, to that building, that unit, is not going to be converted into a dwelling? That's my question.
Sure. So any temporary structure, we don't put electricity on the building, we put it next to the building in a service pole, and then they run the electrical to the pole. That way, we make sure that it's a standalone, ground fault, compliant power pole, and then they use it as sort of a plug-in device. So that would be any cargo container that's on wheels, any refrigerated trucks, anything like that. So they plug them in. We wouldn't actually put a meter on something that's temporary and movable.
Okay.
Yep.
Because there are a lot of people that are taking advantage of those units for agricultural purposes at this time.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Mr. Cunningham?
Yeah, I do share some of the same concerns Chris was pointing out as well. One of the other things that kind of raises my eyebrows a little bit is that for similar portable storage containers, wouldn't that be considered a shed as well? Because I know a lot of people convert sheds for rental properties, mother-in-law suites, pool houses. It seems like we could be putting the clamps on a lot of those uses that are already done in Beaufort County. And some of those are made of metal, some are made of wood. So how do we address that?
Sure. So this is going to be a little bit nuanced. They don't convert them, they use the materials and reconstruct them. So you can't go buy a shed from like a big box store, and without doing major modifications, basically pulling it apart and then reassembling it according to the code standard, you can't live in it. The only thing that you can do is use them as accessory storage units. They cannot become habitable space. So, for example, a lot of them have like Masonite T111 siding. To make that work in a coastal area, you would have to pull that off, re-sheet it, and depending on the engineer, you may have to add a number of studs. So basically, you're not converting it, you're taking apart and using the materials to build something that otherwise you would have to build from scratch anyway. It's not cost-effective in any way to convert one of those types of buildings. It's far cheaper to have it engineered, designed, and built for the purpose, you know, that you want to use it for as the end user.
Okay. Any other comments? Mr. Rod, it's almost, I guess somebody's doing this, but it's almost inconceivable to me that anybody could make the economics work.
I don't, I don't think you can.
Right.
Yes, sir. My personal opinion.
It is a big thing people are doing, converting shipping containers into houses, and putting multiple shipping containers together and turning into two- and three-story houses. It is a thing that happens across the U.S. right now.
Yeah.
Same thing with the tiny homes. It's no different than people that get turned up. Same thing with the tiny homes, it's no different than people that get, turn the trailers into tiny homes, and they put them on RV resorts, I mean, you've seen them in Bluffton already, they're not an RV you went and bought off a lot, a lot of people build them on trailers, and so I don't know, that, part of it does worry me a little bit, because I feel like it could restrict those. I don't know, I haven't read the entire ordinance to know if it could, and actually it's just by title only, so the ordinance hasn't been drawn up yet. I am going to oppose it just because of that. I don't think it's our place to say that, if it meets the codes and people want to spend the money to make it meet the codes, that is none of my business. As long as they're meeting the codes, we set for it as a county. Cost effective, it might not be, it might be completely outrageous, and if that's the financial decision they want to make, that's out of my jurisdiction. That's just my philosophy, I understand the logic behind it, I understand that you could have somebody that starts it and doesn't finish it, I could understand someone filing for the permits and saying it's done, and us not going in and completely checking it, and we went off on CO and they could strip it and use it for whatever they want, there's a lot of gray area, but I still don't think it's, at least my personal place to say, what people can spend their money on in that way.
I just thought of something, I was in the Outer Islands of Maine last month, and they're, they're bringing, taking these containers and they're attaching them to existing residences as an added bedroom, that's what they're doing. Would that, how would that work under this proposed code?
It would not be allowed under this.
Not allowed, okay, thanks.
Mr. Hervishan?
I've got, I guess, two questions now, but how can that happen in Maine, which is fairly, it's a fairly harsh climate from what I understand? That's number one, and then number two, does this apply to something that was on a trailer or had wheels? If it was, like if it was a container on wheels, basically, would that apply as well?
So yeah, you're right, two totally different questions. One, I'm not familiar with the codes in Maine, so I don't know.
It was worth a shot.
Yeah, I have no idea. A lot of states, I will say this, do not regulate those buildings, South Carolina is not one of those states.
Got it.
The other question, can you repeat that second question?
Basically if it had wheels.
Yeah, so at that point, it's not governed by the building code, it would be governed by the zoning code as a vehicle, that goes back to tiny homes. They're vehicles, so you, that's a whole different, that's not something the building code would get involved with, that's a zoning code issue, and I guess that would pertain to boats and a lot of other things that could be on wheels, that people would desire to live in, yeah.
Now I'm really done.
Okay. All right, we will find out how many objections we have to this. We know we have one objection, is there anyone else who would object to moving forward with this on first reading? Seeing no other objection, this will pass with nine yes and one no. Item twenty-four is approval of a resolution approving the Beaufort County Code, Beaufort County Notice of Funding Opportunity, number one, Plan Created for the Purpose of Crafting the Beaufort County Plan to Submit to the South Carolina Opiate Relief Fund Board. A motion please.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Rodman?
Second.
Mr. Glover? Duly motioned and seconded, any discussion? This will be approved without objection and I see no objections. Approval of a resolution to adopt recommendations to award fiscal year twenty-three community services grant program funds in the amount of three hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars to the community services organizations. Motion please.
So moved.
Mr. Dawson makes the motion, a second please.
Second.
Mr. Glover makes the second, duly motioned and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, this will be approved without objection and I see no objections. Number twenty-six is a recommend, recommend approval of a resolution to amend the agreement creating a Regional Council of Governments, Article Two, Section Two, Membership and Representation. Motion please, so moved. Mr. Somerville makes the motion, a second please.
I'll second.
Ms. Howard makes the second, duly motioned and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, this will be approved without objection and I see no objections. And number twenty-seven is approval of a resolution to approve ARPA fund sign-on bonus policy. Motion please.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cunningham makes the motion, a second please.
I'll second.
Mr. Lawson makes the second, duly motioned and seconded, discussion? Seeing none, this will be approved without objection. Item number twenty-eight, this is a result of postponing this. What we're going to ask a member of council is to make a motion to approve this, but also we'll ask council to actually defeat this. We've already had the MOA approved by Hilton Head Island, signed off by Hilton Head Island, approved and signed by county council, so this resolution is not needed. So a motion please.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cunningham makes the motion, second. Mr. Somerville makes the second, duly motioned and seconded. I would ask for a vote and of objection to this, and unanimity of objecting to this? Is there anyone wishes to pass this? How about we reverse that? Seeing none, we are in agreement to void this. Item number twenty-nine is approval of resolution authorizing the county administrator to move forward with option one of the facilities master plan to include an off-site law enforcement center. A motion please.
A second, coming from the chairman.
Okay, Mr. Rodman makes the motion, Mr. Glover makes the second, duly motioned and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, this will be approved without objection and I see no objections. Item thirty is approval of a resolution authorizing the county administrator to execute the necessary documents and provide funding for the purchase of development rights on tax map listed, known as Village Creekside. Motion please.
So moved.
I'll second.
Mr. Somerville makes the motion, Ms. Howard makes the second, duly motioned and seconded, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to comment that this is a wonderful opportunity for a family to preserve their property in, in a smaller parcel that we don't usually get to do in the Rural and Critical Lands Program, but they're willing to do it, and it's just a great opportunity.
Yes, it is, yes. Any other comments? Mr. Flouelling?
Yes, sir, I want to point out that the source funds is Rural and Critical Lands Program.
Yes, it is, thank you for pointing that out.
I'd like the agenda and the documents that are prepared to specifically note that.
I believe they did, I know in the AIS it did say it was from Rural and Critical Lands.
Exactly.
Yes. Okay, duly motioned and seconded, any further discussion? This will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. That brings us to citizen comments, the second time around, is there any member in the audience who wishes to make a comment? Seeing none, is there any other item to come before us before we adjourn? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.
Record.
Yes.